Of course, they were all outside the trailer.
Good evening, everyone. It is now 5:30, and I will call our Burnsville City Council Work Session to order. Our work sessions are very informal, and we go directly to our agenda items. But before we do that, if the clerk could note that Councilmember Schultz is absent tonight, and I believe that Councilmember Workman is going to make it.
Okay.
Am I correct in understanding that? I did not get a notice about Councilmember Workman.
That's my understanding here.
Okay. So I think you can add him on when he arrives. So if the clerk can do that, please. And tonight's meeting is being... Here he comes. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. And members of the public may attend in person, as some are already in the chambers, or the public can also watch this meeting online at burnsvillemen.gov/meetings, or can watch us on Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public also can participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. Information about tonight's meeting is available on the meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. So the first item this evening is the Economic Development Strategic Framework. And before I hand it over to Mr. Jeff Thompson, our Deputy City Manager and Community Development Director, to introduce our guest this evening, City Manager Lindberg, you have any opening remarks to make?
I don't, Mayor. I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Okay. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'll just do a brief introduction of this project. So as the council knows, the Leadership Playbook, one of the 12 items that we're working on, is an economic development update, or really a new economic development strategic framework. And at the end of last year, we went out for an RFP and selected StanTech Consulting to assist us in the development of our new economic development strategic framework. And then we really kicked that project off here in 2024 with the council kind of publicly. The project in February is when we had a kickoff with the council in a work session to kind of update you on what we were planning to do with the project. We are midway, and not in exact timing, but midway through the plan in terms of phases. So we've kind of conducted the first phases of community engagement and done a lot of the data gathering between our people in Burnsville and our economy, and then done some peer city review. So really, tonight is the mid-project check-in with the council to kind of review the update on the data, and also to review the draft objectives for your feedback and input before, as Tom will talk about from StanTech, we launch into the next phases of engagement to further refine our draft objectives around economic development and some of the strategies that come out of that. So with that, we have Tom Leighton here tonight with StanTech Consulting, who's been assisting us with this project to walk through the presentation and the update on those items.
Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff. Does it sound okay? I don't need to do anything special?
No, I think usually the mics are for going out into the public. So you'll have to use your outside voice.
Okay. I'll try to use my outside voice. Thank you for inviting me to touch base with you on this project that is, as Jeff said, midway. I might say it's 60% through. So appreciate that, and it's an opportune time to talk with you again. I think it's worth it to think about what an economic development strategy is at a local level. It's really about asking the question, how do we support Burnsville's local economy for its business success, for its workers, and for its residents? So that's the question we're asking in all aspects of this. You know, we've done a fair amount of work already, talked to a lot of stakeholders already, and been really enjoyable and informative conversations. And before I get into the meat of this, I want to say a couple of things that rose to the top that Burnsville should be very proud of. And that is, we consistently get good feedback about support for businesses, support for local businesses, and support for developers that are trying to do something where staff are working with them to try to be problem solvers and bring resources to the table within the parameters of the city's regulatory and other structures. So that's a real compliment. Another real compliment, I think, to you is just learning, as I've talked to many of your economic development partners, that you have a stronger-than-usual network of partners that focuses exactly on the types of small businesses that you have a wealth of in Burnsville. So you have a very strong alignment between your business community and the network of partners that is working to support them. The goal for tonight is I will be highlighting some of the key findings in our research so far and in our process so far. And I hope there's a few minutes at the end to get your feedback on some of that aspects of that. I have a couple of questions to tee it up, and I hope we have time for you all to give some input. So with that, next slide, please. So with each of these slides, there's much more information than you're going to want me to go through in detail. So I'm going to pick out some key details to highlight, and we'll move through those in order to give us a chance to have a little discussion at the end. I think we're on track now. The information I want to pick up, pull out of this slide, is Burnsville's growth, population growth. It's smaller, that's the bar on the left, it's smaller than the Twin Cities metropolitan area as a whole. Great, thank you. But for a suburban community, it's stronger than average, and that also tells us that powers your economy. It also tells us that residential development is happening in Burnsville, which, again, is not consistent around the metropolitan area. So Burnsville is an attractive place to do, for people to live, for new development to occur, and for business growth to occur. On this slide, I just want to note the... And you know what? I am actually going to do something kind of awkward and put on my other glasses. I'm wearing my computer glasses, so I'm not able to read the slide from where I'm sitting. All right. And it's still not big enough. All right. By memory, it might not be big enough for you all either, so apologize for the small wording on this slide. By memory, the thing I'll highlight is in the upper right, the jobs section. And that is that you've got a rapidly growing job base in the medical sector, as well as in retail jobs and in the, excuse me, in the, just the base business manufacturing sector. So that's a local strength. And I'm going to switch my glasses back. Next slide. Oh, that's me. Next slide. Direct your attention to the overlapping circles at right. And it's really important to understand that there are more people coming into Burnsville to work than there are leaving Burnsville for work. And again, that's unusual in suburban communities in Minneapolis. It means that you have a particularly rich job base, a particularly rich local economy. The second thing I'm going to note is in the bar chart at the left. If you look at the bottom rows on that bar chart, they indicate the industrial sectors, that you've got the strongest concentration of jobs. So that's medical jobs, that's retail jobs, and manufacturing jobs. And in fact, a lot of small businesses... The next tier of bars refers to a lot of other categories of small businesses. So again, to look at your base, your base industry is extremely strong. And this is one of the reasons why that's a powerful set of base industries. Your salaries for manufacturing businesses, in manufacturing businesses, and your salaries, your medical sector salaries, tend to pay living wages. So this is a real resource for Burnsville to have strength in these sectors. This is a slide that provides a map of where those, many of your industrial job sectors are. You have three locations where those are particularly concentrated. They have slightly different character. They were built in different eras, but they provide a real complement of job opportunities. So one of the things that we've learned in this study is that those are areas that may look like they're not completely up to date. Some of the businesses may not have the strongest appearance, but they are working for you. They are in demand by employers. There is very low vacancy in that region. In fact, you know, some of, one of the industrial brokers I talked to said that there's more scarcity in this category of business space than there is in the brand-new business space. So again, that's a resource for you, and in a way that sets the framework for a small business incubator type of economy. And I think you might want to think about Burnsville as having a small business incubator economy. This is another map that has looked at Burnsville's job locations through the lens of office development. So you've got a couple of the same areas identified, but it also highlights the strength of your medical office district in Fairview and the heart of the head city, where there's a number of local residents serving offices. You can see in the chart at the left, which charts vacancy rates for Burnsville's office properties compared to the Twin Cities metropolitan area as a whole, that Burnsville has lower vacancy in its office properties. Thank you. I'm not struggling as much as I was a few minutes ago. This is a chart that shows the retail sector, and it shows that Burnsville has a higher vacancy rate than the Twin Cities retail sector as a whole, which I know doesn't come to a surprise to you. And certainly, one of the focuses of Burnsville has been to support Burnsville Mall and the reinvention of that district so it can serve another generation of residents with retail fabric, and that's a project that's ongoing. But it's not the sole focus or even the primary focus of this project. There are a lot of ongoing economic development strategies that are important to pursue. This is a chart that shows at the top of this chart that Burnsville is, with respect to this group of comparison cities, has the highest rent rates in comparison to average household income. So there are a lot of Burnsville households that are struggling to meet their housing costs, and we see that in other data as well. So something to keep in mind. Now, as we asked, one of our responses to the survey, economic development survey we sent out, the common response is that Burnsville is an affordable place to live. So people also recognize that in comparison with the core cities, for many households, Burnsville gives them that balance between affordability and proximity.
Can you say that again, Tom?
Yes.
With the rent rates being so high, and the affordability comes in on the homeownership side of things?
I'm sorry. Can you ask your question?
Just repeat what you were saying about...
I don't think we want to discount that there are a lot of existing Burnsville households that are challenged to meet their housing costs. At the same time, Burnsville is recognized by many of the people that responded to our survey as being an affordable place to live. So we have to, I think we live with both of those truths. Compared to core cities, Burnsville, I think, is a desirable place to live from an affordability category.
So, okay, so if our rent rates are high, but it's still affordable, what data points are you making?
I think it partly reflects the fact that there are, that the median incomes in Burnsville are a little lower on average than the median incomes in the Twin Cities metro as a whole.
Hmm. But our per capita income, because I was reading something else that told us what our per capita income, it was like $74,000, $75,000 per household. Is that correct?
I don't have that number at my fingertips.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sense of everything when we're looking at the future of Burnsville, and we have our housing stock, and we have our industrial district, and where the jobs are, and what it pays, and so forth. I mean, these are all data points that we need to address when we're looking to the future.
Yes. And the other thing that affirms that, that chart that shows Burnsville at the top of those pure cities in terms of housing cost per average income, is that when we look at housing cost burden, the percentage of families that are housing cost burdened, that means paying 30% or more of your income on your housing cost, there's a higher percentage than most suburbs of families that are housing cost burdened.
Okay.
This is a chart that kind of affirms what Jeff was saying in terms of us being partway through. We're at a second touch point with you folks. From this point, we go out and do another round of conversations with stakeholders, another round of community engagement. And we'll drill down in terms of proposing some specific economic development programs or strategies. Today, we will look at sort of a set of overarching objectives. I can't read this one, but I probably can with these glasses. Yeah, some things I wanted to highlight on this slide are that Burnsville gets good grades for, and this is where we've got a little bit of information that's intention with each other, Mayor. Burnsville, in our survey, got good grades for its affordability, its parks and recreation, and its support for business. There were concerns expressed about traffic, about the condition of retail, the schools, and about aging housing. So probably things you've heard in other settings as well. One of the steps in our project was to identify five pure cities and to have targeted conversations with them about what they're doing that they feel like is innovative, that has been successful, so we're bringing those ideas back to this study. It's important to note that we did a parallel set of conversations with folks that are part of your partnership community in economic development, and that includes Greater MSP, Experience Burnsville, Chamber of Commerce, the Technical and Community Colleges, and the School District Pathways Program, which is partly how we understood the value of this network of partners that's very compatible with your small business community, and is really attentive to the needs of your small business community. So these are the five cities that we did peer conversations with. And here's our landing point. In all these conversations, in our feedback with the, from the public, and in our research, that surfaced a lot of potential economic development strategies that we could pursue. We found that those could be grouped really naturally under these six headings, these six objective headings. So that's what we're bringing back to you tonight, categories of strategies. And they, they're an interesting... One way to think about these is they address different elements of your economic development network. Objective one addresses the businesses themselves and brings support to those businesses. Objective two looks at those districts, those industrial space districts, and the actual physical infrastructure of those industrial-oriented or business-oriented buildings. Objective three speaks to the infrastructure that both the businesses and the district needs. Objective four is focused on the workforce itself. What do they need to be successful in terms of training, perhaps housing? Objective five is attending to this partnership network because it's clear that the city itself doesn't have a role in every aspect of this, but in many cases, it can play a really important role in terms of catalyzing and bringing, convening, and bringing people to the table in that partnership network. And the last objective relates to building on the health community that already exists here, and really embracing that as a larger part of Burnsville's identity. The last slide simply says that after this meeting, our final steps are an additional community engagement event, additional stakeholder meetings. We will finalize the objectives and build in those more concrete strategies that I noted, and we'll bring the final plan back to you. Now, if there is, I'm not sure if there's time for discussion, but if there's time for discussion, I have a couple of questions I can put on the table. But it's up to you.
Any comments or questions for Tom?
I felt like that went really fast. Can you go back to the pure cities projects quick, Tom?
Yes.
Is there any way you could just quickly touch on these and elaborate just a little bit on why these were effective?
You know, this is not a piece of research I did personally. My coworker, Adam Jones, worked on these, so I can't speak to them. I was responsible for the stakeholder interviews, but I can't speak to these specifically. I apologize.
And Mayor and Council, I think we can get more information on, from this, if that's something the council desires. We know that we wanted to look at pure cities because we also know from particularly a redevelopment standpoint, we really are in a competitive environment oftentimes with what other initiatives and programs that cities are offering. So we just wanted to kind of look at what we know cities are updated and what they are doing from an economic development standpoint, what tools and resources and strategies they're currently using, so we understand kind of the more regional context of other programs happening in the metro.
Great. Tom, can you go back to the objectives? Because here's what, one of the things...
I'm not sure which slide.
Yeah, I think it's...
Previous?
Second to the last.
Second to the last slide.
Oh, got it. Oh, I see. Yeah, sure.
Your objectives.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Because one of the things in one of your slides is that there's a low vacancy rate. So if it's small business, low vacancy rate in our industrial districts, like I saw Lark is like 0.3%, and then you go down to Southcross and our TIP 1 and 2 district, it's like 0.08% or something like that. And then, of course, the other thing that I understand, but not out of this, is the rents are reasonable and affordable for these small businesses. So one of the things in doing some research is that if we're going to look at fostering small business growth, and we work with the commercial real estate partners that we have, we have a lot of, well, we don't have a lot of vacancy. However, I see great opportunities in a maker economy, because this is, they need cheap space. They're young entrepreneurs that are looking to grow a business and doing something, but they don't need those high ceilings, because the product that we have at Lark, and Sum, and Southcross, their ceilings are not the 28, 29-foot ceilings that a lot of manufacturers are looking for today. So I wonder if this kind of thing informs us, if we're going to grow small business in Burnsville, is defining what that is in the space that we have, that it is, I believe, would be very attractive to the maker economy. Those young entrepreneurs are looking for something that's affordable so that they can initiate their business, grow their business, and all of that.
Sure. And it can be part of the branding of some of those districts.
And that's what I'm thinking.
These are suitable spaces for, right, for entrepreneurs, for maker businesses, yes.
Because I chair the U.S. Conference of Mayor's Small Business and Entrepreneur Task Force, and one of the things is really looking at how you grow your small business in your city. The maker economy is one of those really high-training. It's been coming along, but I think it's catching up with a lot more cities. But we have the right product.
You have the right product, and you also have the right organizational partners at the table. I think about your pathways program and the way that they are cultivating in students an idea about what do you want to do? How do you want to be creative? Right?
Yeah. Because the other thing is that we have a district office for the Small Business Bureau here in Minneapolis. Those kinds of partnerships allow us to do wraparound services for those young entrepreneurs. And so, you know, something, as Jeff, when you all are working on all of this, because that's your number-one objective, is what I'm looking at, which is the right objective because of what I've been seeing. And just getting the data that you're presenting tonight really does that also. Here's the other thing. You go down to our workforce and housing, even though our rents are high, but you're saying that it's affordable to live in Burnsville. So not only for the retail economy, but also if you're looking at a maker economy with young entrepreneurs.
Well, and when people are talking about Burnsville being an affordable place to live, they may also be talking about the availability of goods and services. So there can be multiple dimensions to that.
A question too.
Yeah.
These aren't in order of importance. These are just...
Objectives.
Except we're not saying small businesses are number one or anything like that.
That's...
They're just the objectives. So the other thing in terms of looking at economic development, but I know it's not within our wheelhouse, but it is part of our partnership, is transportation. And we have a strong transit partnership with MBTA, because now, with what MBTA is doing with connect demand, we can have reverse commute, come in, take the connect to wherever they need to go. If they go to Lark, or they can come into Burnsville at the main hub and then go out.
One of the things that came up in a conversation with the Technical and Community College Director was that, you know, those colleges are not close to Burnsville. And there's a, they have a strong desire to support Burnsville-based businesses. And it's not a problem that's been solved, but it's certainly on their wish list to think more about how to try to support better commutes to those colleges from Burnsville.
Yeah. Will it all make sense, Jeff and team, on what I'm seeing? And I'm just wondering, with the rent, is that with all of our new development, or, because we have some really old multi-housing structures?
There are a range of ways to support that objective. There are preservation strategies that, where organizations can buy and preserve the affordability of existing buildings. There are strategies for producing, you know, simply being supportive of affordable housing projects, whether that's mixed income or other affordable housing projects, is a way to support that objective. So there are a number of ways that Burnsville can play a role in addressing that.
I like the information we're getting. Yes, Councilmember Keely.
Well, I just want to, I have a couple of comments about the draft objectives, but I want to talk about what you brought up, or I guess what Tom brought up, the colleges looking to try and better provide transportation to them. MBTA did have a pilot program going to Dakota County Technical College. As a result of pandemic and changes, suspended it, but is, has, or is about to reintroduce that route. And so there's going to be more connectivity to that. I'm trying to think if Inver Hills is in there, and I believe it is somehow. But the overriding statement that I'll make on behalf of MBTA, not that I'm wearing a shirt saying MBTA, it was transportation morning at the chamber, so I wore my chair colors. The organization is very nimble. We're the second-largest transit provider in the state, but we're still not the M-Moth of Met Transit. And we have the ability to be very agile and customize our routes to better support employers getting their employees to work and also to classes. And so we have expanded our staff and brought in some folks that are focusing on community outreach, working with partnerships, large employers everywhere. There's a couple of examples that are in place today that have been highly successful. And what we're really saying to everybody in every meeting we have an opportunity to do is give us a call and work with us. Tell us what your needs are, and we'll figure out a way to modify routes. I think that there's a misperception, I stated this this morning at the transportation meeting, that MBTA, Met Transit, Southwest, whatever it is, that there's, they're a big transportation infrastructure, and everything they do is sort of fixed. And if you can't get to that bus, you know, that's it. Well, enter micro... Well, enter microtransit and MBTA Connect. That can get you the last mile or the first mile. But also, those routes are flexible. We're always looking at where the ridership demand is and working with employer partners and other groups to see colleges, to see how we can better service those employers and our colleges with adjusting our routes or adding new routes. It's safe to say that in the last few years, more money has been pouring into transit. Thankfully, sales tax and some other things, some federal money, federal grants. And we're, we're deploying those new resources. And one of those deployments is, how do we, how do we connect better with our community users and adjust our routes to better serve those folks trying to get from point A to point B, whether it's to work or whatever? Microtransit's great because it's first mile, last mile, but it's also just, I need to go to the doctor. I don't have a car and I have a doctor appointment. And, and it, there is no prerequisite, there's no qualification to ride a three-dollar microtransit from doorstep to doorstep. Whereas some of the other services, as everyone knows, have certain qualifications, disabilities, other income. This is open to the entire general public. So anytime you don't have a car and you need to get somewhere, the microtransit service from MBTA is Savage, Burnsville, Apple Valley, even into the main corridor of Rosemont is, is one large zone. And, and we're adding into Shakopee this fall. So it just keeps getting bigger. So there are some connectivity opportunities. We just need to know, right, from an MBTA standpoint.
Right, great.
Okay, take my MBTA hat off there. Um, I, if I may, can I comment on the draft objectives?
Sure.
I like, you know, fostering small business growth. We always talk about that. We have a great relationship with our chamber. I think that's a great objective. Preserve and enhance industrial spaces. We have some, as Madam Mayor pointed out, two very large. I think we've preserved and enhanced through flexible zoning, our Lark Industrial Park, because that was built a long time ago with lower ceilings. And we've had, we've had to adopt to changing demands there. So I think we're preserving it as an industrial space and adjusting our zoning to support today's marketplace demands. Aligning infrastructure plans with development, redevelopment. I think that's a no-brainer. We just sort of always do that. Develop a skilled workforce and housing. The housing piece, although in its pure sense is really the county, but we are doing our part with changing our, our policy on no more apartments, right? Several years ago, we've dramatically changed the offering in our housing. So we've, we've entered in some higher-end amenity-rich apartment options, you know, market rate.
Yep.
In a city that had fifty-year-old primarily apartment complexes, many of them, which were naturally affordable. And many of them still are naturally affordable. So we are doing our part that we have control over. The skilled workforce is a tough one. I think we can be a partner at the table, but I don't know how that becomes one of our primary draft objectives because that's really the role of the county.
Not the county, school district and higher ed.
Well, but the county has Dakota County workforce. They're really into, I mean, they, they invest. They have a facility that's dedicated to that in partnership with school district. Certainly, school district, that would be on their goals as well. But from a city standpoint, I had a hard time figuring out how we could really be effective or play a major role. Uh, in other words, we can be at the table and be a part of discussions, but I don't know that we can allocate funds, staff and do anything when it comes to trying to develop.
Convenor.
Yes.
We can be a convenor of, of the partnerships.
Then strengthen economic development partnerships? Absolutely. I mean, I think we're always trying to connect and that gets back to zoning, job opportunities, businesses that want to locate in Burnsville. You know, we're all about that. And I think it goes back to the first one, small business growth and strengthen economic development partnerships related to employers, right? We want job creators. We want jobs in the city. And then objective four, or sorry, six, promote health, wellness and aging in place. My only concern with aging in place is we, we do have a lot of people who want to stay in their home their entire life. And that creates a challenge when we're landlocked and we don't have any new single-family houses being built for young families to move in, to help fill up our, our schools, feed the businesses that service families. And that's, that's a tough one. I mean, I, I think we have to do both, but we really want to also offer places for those folks to go when they're empty nesters and they're ready to let go of the maintenance of that home and the costs, property taxes and elsewhere, other things. And, and give them an option, which I believe we've done in the last several years, an option to maybe go into some other rental opportunity where they can live sort of maintenance-free, call it. And, and that can be an apartment or it can be even an HOA-based zero-lot line home.
Assisted living.
Yeah, well, then if that's a need, yes, assisted living. But I was focusing more on people who can get by on their own, but don't want, you know, to have to replace the roof and the siding and maintain the lawn and et cetera, right? They're ready to move into something that is maintenance-free, right? So I think we have to do both, but I, we certainly do a lot today to promote health and wellness. I think there's so many activities with parks in the city that, that encourage that. So the, the big concern is skilled workforce. I think that's a tough one for us to really be directly impacting and involved in and allocating funds and staff, et cetera, to do something with that.
Yeah.
And I think it's really the.
Appreciate, appreciate that.
For aging in place, we, we have started some programs for our seniors for loans that they don't pay off for thirty years or when they transfer.
We do.
So they can stay there.
Yeah.
So many of the seniors, and I'm one of them, it's affordable to live in my house, not give up my house to go around an apartment somewhere. I know we'd like to have those for young families, but on the other hand, you gotta remember the seniors built this city and we shouldn't be forcing them out. We should be helping them to age in place. And we've started those programs and I know that.
Yeah.
I feel we could have, I feel we could go a little further with it.
Now that you consider yourself a senior, I'm going to go back in the archives and find the meeting ten or twelve years ago or fifteen years ago where you said almost exactly what I just got done saying, that we need to offer opportunities for those folks to move out of their home, at least stay in Burnsville, right? We don't want them to move to Apple Valley because we don't have anything for them, but that we really would like to see some turnover for those people who choose to do it. So those young, young families can come in our city.
Changes happen.
One of the nice things is that in a.
And you're right on my tail, pal.
Well, one of the things that's very nice, if you all read the Council Weekly and you have the housing information in there, we have a very good diverse housing stock in Burnsville. From single-family to, uh, single-family attached to duplex and triplex and squats, multifamily and manufactured homes and homeownership. So those multifamily also includes, it's our highest, it's one of the highest after single-family, includes senior living and it's all different kinds of senior living. So we have a lot of different products. And I know that because we have products like in Stafford Green that are age-restricted and others. So we have a lot of different products. So that, that, that's there and I think it's good. It's a, it's a healthy diversified housing stock.
I think we have sixty, a little over sixteen hundred, what we would call senior housing units in.
Yeah, well, yeah. So when you looked at all of this, we have quite a few. And so, you know, this is good data. And I, I, I look at the data and say, okay, how are we going to look to the future? So thank you for.
Right.
The draft. Yeah.
I just, I need a little clarification on this. So what is the goal with these objectives?
I think, Jeff.
Yeah, so Mayor and, and Council, so we, it's a piece of things. So right, we took the, the data we've gathered about the community and the business economy as well as the community input and our peer city review to help inform what are, are really draft objectives, right? We're at the, the point where we have these draft objectives informed by that background data. They will come back to the council looking, so we are going to engage in the next phases of engagement with the community and conversations. And when we bring this back, the final objective will look differently. They'll, they'll look different, right? We will, this is intended to be like a five-year economic development strategic plan. So we need to prioritize, right? Think about resources and what the true priorities and what we're hearing from folks on each of these. So I, I suspect they'll come back condensed and fewer objectives so that we're focused on what the economic development priorities are for Burnsville. And we'll certainly want the council's input on the, the current objectives as well as, as we get into the community engagement, help inform and shape what steps, what those priorities are, what the, what the objective should be and, and some of what some of the action steps should be moving forward on, on those chosen objectives. So this is kind of the, the narrowing and focusing of what we think the objective should be, ultimately what the council will put in the final plan of what we think those objectives ought to be.
The reason I ask, Jeff, and this feels very familiar to me. This feels a lot like the comp plan from 2015. I think if we were to look back at that, we would see a lot of these similar objectives or things that we were looking forward to. And I'm not trying to say that this isn't helpful because it's very helpful. It just, it feels very vanilla and.
It just means that we still have to work on it.
Really exciting about this. It's, it's just these feel like kind of just broad-based objectives. And I'm hoping that when we do go out into the community, something a little bit stronger pops up because, again, it just, it feels like the comp plan kind of just resurfacing at, at this time. So kind of echo some of the things that Councilmember Keely said about this. I feel like we're doing a lot of these things already. And it's maybe more of a maintenance plan than trying to see like, where is this going to kick us into the next twenty years or five years, to try to differentiate between, you know, the shiny toys that Lakeville and Eagan have with their land. So I'm not saying we're pumping the brakes on this. It was just kind of my, the way I, I'm feeling about this as I'm looking at it, so.
Well, I appreciate the input and, and I think what you're saying is valid. We're at a high, high level in this. This is, this sort of groups, as Jeff said, this is sort of a set of broad priority areas. And, and I think it's, I think it's not that interesting either at this, at this level. But it, it becomes more interesting, it becomes more interesting as we say, well, preserving and enhancing industrial space could be about thinking about redevelopment in the Minnesota River Quadrant. Now, now that's a conversation that's a little more compelling, a little more specific, right? So that's the kind of, you know, set of things where we're saying, okay, what do we really want to do in this area? What are we already doing in this area that, that happens and sort of at the next level?
Well, I recall us discussing that specifically and then going in there and talking about planting some trees and making it look nice. And I think everybody that was in there kind of just said, no, we don't want any of that. Leave us alone. And so that was something that we tried to explore and it ended up just kind of going, well, if it's working, you know, don't fix it if it's not broken, kind of a thing. So again, I'm not trying to like nitpick this thing to death. It was just kind of my takeaway. But if, as this grows and we get more detail, I'm sure things will evolve.
Mayor and Council, just to add to that, I think, understood. And I think as we, for each of these, as we prioritize the objectives and bring the final ones to the council, we will also develop with that community input very specific action steps of like the things we will do or explore or consider towards each of those objectives, which will be more meaty, right? And, and more meaningful of like what the actual action is we'll do to drive towards that objective from an economic development standpoint.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Anything else? Any other comments for staff? Actually, I like the work that you guys are doing because it focuses on us on what we can do with the products that we have. And then we can say, if we're moving to the future, what is it that we can work together with our partners, like the commercial brokers and the property owners? And to say, here are some things that we can work together on. And what do they need from us so that they can advertise for those vacant spaces and invite businesses? And so what is our role in helping to facilitate that transaction? So I like it because it informs, it informs us for the future. And we know that industrial spaces in Burnsville, we have old stock, but it's really valuable stock for young entrepreneurs, the maker industry. So I think this all informs when you get into doing your strategic plan and, and diving into the, you have the objectives, but the plan for each of it. So I think it really informs us. So I, I like the plan. Thank you. It identifies what we're going to do. Of course, we've been working on these. But it's, it never ends because we're continuously an evolving city. And so if we're, we're always working on small businesses, why? Because it's our highest, um, economy in Burnsville. We have twenty-seven hundred businesses in Burnsville and the majority of that is small business. So I embrace that because, and own it. And own that we're also a retail city. And things are continuously evolving in that domain as well. You know, I like that we're doing some redevelopment on County Road forty-two. So that's great. But cities continue to evolve and it's, it's the same, same issues, different time. So I thank you. Thank you, Jeff, Greg and staff for great work. And thank you, Tom, for you and your colleagues at Stantec.
Thank you and thank you for the really good substantive input.
Seeing more, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then now we move on to adult use of cannabis zoning and regulations. And Mike Marosa, our planning manager, is presenting. Jeff, do you have any opening statements to make?
Mayor, I don't. I think Mike will introduce the, the work that we're doing around this right now. And I'm certainly available to assist with any questions the council may have.
Okay, very good. Mike, the floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So we're going to jump to adult-use cannabis next. Uh, in two thousand twenty-three, the Minnesota State Legislature passed Minnesota Session Law, Chapter forty-three, which legalized adult-use cannabis. When this law was adopted or approved, lots of cities without, throughout the state passed moratoriums, updated their zoning codes or just waited until the State Office of Cannabis Management or OMC was established. The intent of the OMC was to create and implement regulations around cannabis throughout the state. As part of the legislation as well, local governing, governing authorities can adopt reasonable restrictions on cannabis on time, place and manner, but they cannot prohibit cannabis, cannabis uses within the jurisdiction. So over the past, since two thousand three, or two thousand twenty-three, the state legislature has been updating the code, the state statute a little more and the OMC began operation. Since then, in June of this past, this past June, the OMC released guidance for administration and compliance needs to address, that we need to address in our city code. The guidance is also provided to you within your packets that was attached within your packets. So that guidance tells the cities what kind of updates we needed to do. So we specifically need to look at Title III, which is our business regulations and that we need to update for licensing and registration of cannabis uses. And also Title X, which is our zoning ordinance. However, at this time, we are proposing to update the zoning ordinance only and not do Title III until further information is released by the OMC on, of the administration process. So we are only looking at updating zoning at this time. And Jeff can provide a little bit more information on our zoning code. As I've only been here a couple of months, so.
Mayor and Council, so I think one of the things we wanted to get a little ahead of, particularly in why we approached zoning first is though, just the way our zoning ordinance is structured today. In reviewing it, we think that the ordinance may just by default prohibit some of these businesses in zoning districts. And so we want to make sure we get ahead of those zoning considerations with the council, that we have this conversation tonight, which is the policy direction and how you want us to approach this from a zoning standpoint, that we can go back then, do the full audit of our code and come back through the, the. and how you want us to approach this from a zoning standpoint, that we can go back then, do the full audit of our code and come back through the, the normal process with the planning commission on zoning review and where the different types of licenses or different types of adult use cannabis businesses can be located in the community consistent with that policy direction of the city. So if we don't do that, we're worried that as the licenses begin issued in early 2025 by the Office of Cannabis Management, and we will get notified about the zoning compliance, we may inherently be restricting them more so than what the council's policy, before the council has given us input on where you want us to allow these businesses.
I like the process. Because if we understand the zoning and give you some direction on all of that, then you can work with it. Because it also informs what you say to those who are interested, because we have some businesses owners here who are interested in selling cannabis. So, and it's existing business. So we're addressing zoning, you know, what are we going to do about it? And my hope is that we're not going to be obstacles.
Thank you, Jeff and the mayor for the comments. So on the screen are the 13, oh, there's 12 on the screen. There's total of 13 licensable cannabis uses that the zoning code must consider. The one that's not on the screen or.
So these are all different kinds of businesses in the cannabis industry.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, they're all part of the supply chain. So one of them is not listed on here. The one that's not listed is events. At this time, we're looking at doing events as part of Chapter Three and covering it in that section as the events have different zoning, different requirements in zoning. So of the 12 on the screen, there is two, most of them do fall within our current zoning standards. However, there's two of them on there, the mezzo business and micro businesses. They're a little unique as they're kind of the all in one stops, one stop shop. They can cultivate, manufacture, produce and sell onsite.
That's the micro business and the mezzo business?
Yep.
They do all of that function.
They can, yep, they can do all three onsite. So they're a little different than the rest of the supply chain that's on the screen. So generally you have the cultivators which grow and produce the product. Then there's manufacturers and processors that produce the THC or get the TLC, THC, TLC, THC out of the cannabis. And then they manufacture the product that can be sold at retailers. And then there's also along those same lines, there's distribution facilities, wholesales, and all these kind of feed into the system like we previously said. Each one of these does have a definition that the state did create for each one of those uses. That was included within your packet in the OMC guidelines. So I'm not going to read through them all, but I just wanted to touch on the first two. And a lot of them, like I said, are very similar to existing uses within the community. So because of this, we do have some specific policy questions that we're looking for council input. So the first one is, I'm going to go high level on these and one will dial in as the presentation goes on. So the first one is, and should cannabis, cannabis retail be permitted in districts with existing off sale liquor, tobacco or retail sales? That's the first question. Again, I'm going to go through these and we'll have time for questions and answers later, later in the presentation. Second question, should cannabis cultivating, research, manufacturing and distribution be permitted in the same districts with similar uses that are currently allowed? Third question, should there be setback standards for residential zone properties and certain cannabis uses? Mainly looking at right there, your cultivation and manufacturing. Should there be performance standards for cannabis uses such as order mitigation? But upon review, I've noticed there's a couple of other ones we'll talk about as well, that cities are putting in the performance standards. And the fifth one, kind of the bigger, biggest talking point is, should there be buffers restricting retail cannabis locations near schools, daycares, treatment facilities and parks? So that is the primary, I am changing it on the screen, right? Just on my laptop. So.
I would say, oh, okay, go ahead. Go to the next one and then we'll go back to.
Do you have the clicker?
I do.
Okay.
There we go. All right, we're caught up. Sorry. I apologize. All right, we should be good there. So the last question is the buffer one. So going forward, the, so like I previously said, a lot of the uses that are within the bill currently exist in the city. There is retail, which is shown on the screen and the board that's retail is permitted within the community in the zoning districts, underlying zoning districts, I should say. There's medical marijuana. There's, so there's a two primary retail uses. We also allow wholesale within our commercial zoning districts as well, which is unique here, which is nice for us as we implement this, that we already allow medical marijuana distribution facilities within specific retail districts already. So they kind of go hand in hand. So we already allow for marijuana, medical marijuana distribution facilities and districts that allow for retail. So what the OMC states is that the cities shall implement cannabis standards like any other use. We should not be restrictive against it. We should treat cannabis like we would treat any other use within the community. So we talked about retail, then we have cultivation. We only allow for cultivation indoors in our zoning code. And that's only allowed in the I-1 with through a conditional use permit and in the I-2 as a permitted use. These are more intense industrial districts. Research facilities like laboratories are permitted in the I-1, I-2 and I-3. And then manufacturing and wholesale are also permitted as well. So our approach that planning staff has taken is we're looking at this, instead of creating all a bunch of new regulations, we're looking at implementing or modifying our existing regulations to allow for cannabis uses instead of rewriting the book. So the first question, and I don't know how exactly you want to do this for council input.
We'll take them one at a time because they're very dense.
Yep. So the first question is, should retail cannabis establishments be permitted in all zoning districts where existing off sale liquor, tobacco or general retail sales are currently permitted?
Members of the council. Because, you know, if we say yes here, I think it's number five is buffer zones.
Yep.
Because if you're looking at liquor and you're saying there's a buffer zone, what is that buffer zone? And you're saying schools, daycare, treatment facilities, parks that prohibit retail cannabis establishment.
Yep, I see.
So I think this one and five go hand in hand if we're going to look at them. Because we have our liquor stores that are very close to daycare.
And parks.
And parks. And if I look at the heart of the city and if Red Lion wanted to sell schools just down the way. And I think Jamie, you have a daycare just in the next shopping center just north of you.
Yes, and that would be one of my questions is because technically next to us is a church.
Yeah.
But it used to be a laundromat and then a church bought it. So I don't think it's technically zoned or I don't know how that works. And then the daycare below us used to be a strip mall. And I don't know how long their lease is, but we should say that it would remain a daycare that they could leave too. So it's like, where is that buffer?
Yeah. And I think we need to be common sense about that. Because when I thought about this and reading this, it's like those young little three, four and five year olds aren't going to go and try and buy cannabis.
Kids are growing up a lot faster than they used to. Not my kids.
So I think some of this, when I look at number five.
Well, are we addressing number one?
We're addressing number one, but if we say yes, we need to make sure that we are also going to follow through with number five.
Well, and is there a grandfathering for existing businesses? You know, that's a different discussion.
Yeah. Yeah.
If we, if we were to put in some sort of buffer.
But I think the ordinance.
Zown existing business out of business, right? Pardon?
What existing businesses? Are you talking about our liquor stores or?
No, if we put it, referring to number five, if we put a buffer in, we would be, that would, that would, if we do that, that would be addressing new businesses in the future. Existing would have to be grandfathered in as existing, not.
Well, I think this is.
In a retail area right now, in a strip mall.
And I think this is something we would look to our attorney and our staff to say, because when, when we put in an ordinance for the future, we should look at it long term, that it's, just because the use changes doesn't mean it's going to impact the existing business. So how we put that into an ordinance comes from you, Jared and Jeff.
Mayor and council, if I could, so yes, I, I think we can, we certainly, we have some more information on the buffer requirements. We can talk more specifically about the buffers. I think this question is just getting to, you know, our zoning ordinance today lists specific zoning districts on where we allow retail uses.
Okay.
Right? And which districts are the, so this question for the council is just from a base zoning perspective, do you want us to allow retail cannabis businesses within all retail zoning districts, consistent with how we treat every other type of retail, such as liquor and tobacco?
And right now that's permitted in those districts.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
And so what do you think?
I, if it's permitted in those districts.
In retail.
We've already got medical cannabis in a retail shopping center.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I can see where that's going to happen.
Okay. Vince?
I'm thinking about our distance requirement between liquor stores, if that's going to interfere with this at all. If we're going to look to a similar, so but for 42, we have to have excellent distance between liquor stores. We're not talking about doing that with this, correct?
No, this is just retail?
No, Mayor and council, to address your question, we can add, our current code has buffers for liquor stores outside of the Burnsville Center area. They have to have a distance between the facilities of three quarters of a mile. Unfortunately, that exceeds state law requirements and we'll get to the buffers. So we couldn't put those kind of, those rules around cannabis as that exceeds the requirement set by state statute of 1,000 feet. So we could not do the same thing for, like we do for liquor currently.
Okay, Jared?
Mayor and council, I just want to clarify, the, the buffer is sort of an overlay on this issue. So we're talking about, do you want to allow these uses within particular zoning districts? And then you would apply that buffer on top of that. So let's say the B2, you could have retail in the B2 as a permitted use. And then whatever buffer that you ultimately come to, that would be applied on top. If that makes sense.
So if I, I want to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Think this through a minute. I think in Dakota County, county itself is, can go up to like 38 licenses. Is what I, I think it used to be. I don't know if it's changed or not. But I also understand under the statute that if the licenses aren't taken up, we have to keep accepting applications until.
You mean the, the, the retailers have to go after the application, not the city?
We don't go after the applications, but if, if the 38 aren't used, if someone comes to us and they want to get an application, we have to look at that application under state laws.
Yeah.
Is what I understand, whether we have five of them or 20 of them.
Yeah.
If they're, if they're just coming to us, that's what's happening. Is that correct?
So Jeff and I were just conversing. I, I think that's outside of the city. I'm not sure about that Deacony County regulation. Moreover, that would kind of be a separate thing other than the zoning. So zoning is just, hey, where, where can they be located within the city?
Yeah, just the zoning.
If a license is available for them to locate.
No, I'm just thinking about the 42 area where you can have so many licenses right next to each other.
But we're looking at the zoning. So the thing is retail establishment. Okay. So are you okay with retail establishment? To sell cannabis?
Yeah, I couldn't find any reason why we shouldn't.
It was my understanding they already were in the gas stations, but I guess that was a different.
That's a different license.
I just learned that recently. So I already thought we were peppered all over the city. So.
No, but this is, there was a difference of what you're talking about, right? So I wish you, we had a split screen so you had all of the different applications of this cannabis thing and where all of this at. I mean, it's, it's an industry that is new to me and I'm learning a great deal about it, but.
Yeah, Mayor and council, right now, before, I think it was in 20.
So what, what are we selling now?
Currently, it's hemp product, hemp deprived.
Beverages and all of that.
Yeah, I was going to say it wrong here. It's hemp, hemp deprived, drive, thank you, THC. So no cannabis for, it's all hemp.
Okay.
So that's been sold in all those places currently. There is no cannabis products besides medical being sold in the state and on a couple reservations. Otherwise, everything you can buy currently is all hemp product, hemp THC. So that's what you see at some of the gas stations now, total wine that's drinking by the edibles or the drink. You cannot buy any kind of smoking product currently. It's either edibles or drink. So with this new law and all these have to be licensed with the state or the OMC, they'll hopefully start coming out, they're anticipating the first quarter of 25. That's the new ones that we'll start seeing popping up.
We're looking at cannabis and we're selling hemp now.
Correct.
This is about cannabis. Okay.
And, and Mike, go ahead. Just for clarification, so this is actually buying like the plant itself. You can go in and buy like a Ziploc bag of weed essentially. Because you can't do that now, right?
Jeff?
Yeah, Mayor and council, so yes, our understanding is it's any product that's derived from the cannabis plant. So it could be flour, it could be edibles, it could be other products that are from the cannabis plant. Is, is what will be regulated by the, the Office of Cannabis Management. They haven't issued any licenses statewide yet. And so that's the, the product type that we're specifically trying to address in the zoning ordinance amendments we're talking about.
And the stuff that's being sold now is not that, even though it has a little triangle on there and it says THC on it.
Correct. It has THC. It is, not hardly an expert, but it is THC that's derived from the hemp plant. So it's, it's a different, it is THC, it just has a different.
We're all learning to.
Yeah, I'm just, there's way more to this than I thought, but to your question, I'm fine with it in.
Retail.
Retail.
Okay. And, and Dan K, you're okay with it in retail?
I just spoke to that.
Yeah, just wanted to, yeah, okay, retail, okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone. That's a good conversation. We're going to go to number two now. Should cannabis businesses related to cultivating, research facilities, manufacturing or processing and wholesale or distribution be permitted in all zoning districts where similar uses are allowed? Now we're looking at mainly industrial uses here. These are uses you generally see in your industrial business parks, sometimes in your B4. In our current B4 district currently, there is a manufacturing and a processing facility located off of Nicollet right next to Bolton Mix Facility. There's been no complaints, there's no order complaints, but they are manufacturing or taking hemp and making THC edibles at that facility.
They're dealing just with hemp?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Because the other part that I, I would like to speak to.
Yep, so.
Is the odor that I understand comes from these manufacturing facilities. So members of the council, one of the things, quality ingredients, if you all remember, all of the, maybe some don't remember, the complaints about when quality ingredients, before they put the scrubbers in, and if they're doing caramel popcorn, then that sweet smell goes out into the air and everybody is smelling it over and over again, and it gets to some people and they don't like it. Or if they're doing popcorn and it's cheese and then that's in the air and they're smelling it over and over. Because we've gotten a lot of complaints, whether it's from what is now Collins and all of the neighborhoods around there. And so finally, in working with quality ingredients, they put scrubbers in. So it's, we don't hear a lot of complaints. The other is that we had, we used to get a lot of complaints from Liang Chins on 13th, where when they're cooking and then it goes out into the air and everybody around there would call and complain about the odor because it goes on and on and on. Now, I understand manufacturing cannabis has an odor, correct? Okay. Because I understand it's really, really intense. Is that correct?
Mayor, yes. And the OMC guidelines are provided. That is one of the nuisance or. Uh, mayor, yes, and the OMC guidelines are provided, that is one of the nuisance or concerns that was.
It's a nuisance.
And my past municipality did have a cultivation, manufacturing facility, and there was some more concerns from that facility. They did have scrubbers and the equipment on there to reduce the impacts on the surrounding area, it was located in the middle of an industrial park, so it was placed in an appropriate, placed appropriately.
So they need to have scrubbers, because I think Liang Chins and quality ingredients put scrubbers in.
We even made a restaurant put scrubbers in one of the malls.
Pardon?
We even made a restaurant put scrubbers in one of the malls.
Yeah, yeah, because.
So the question's similar to the last one, mayor and council, is should we allow these uses in zoning districts that currently allow for similar uses within the community? Same as the retail business, more on the industrial side of it.
This would be more in the industrial, I would say, you know, to, it's a, it's a new business, but it's the, we need to make sure that we put in place an ordinance where they have to have scrubbers. Or we'd be hearing from our residents and businesses who will be smelling this stuff. And if you live next door to somebody who is manufacturing this and the odor is intense, wow, but you don't get, does it have an effect on you when you're smelling this stuff?
I suppose it could.
Only if it's small.
If you're close enough. I don't mean to throw a wrench in this, but we recently allowed schools in industrial areas, so is that going to pose a problem if we have a school in an industrial area next to a manufacturing facility?
That's another question, that's the reason why we have zoning like in industrial area, we don't have schools, now we have, okay, Jeff?
So mayor, mayor and council, good questions, and ultimately what we're looking for here, right, is the council's direction on the policy outcomes for these. If I could maybe simplify to the first two questions very succinctly, is to say, our zoning district today allows retail in certain zoning districts, it allows industrial type manufacturing, cultivating, processing uses in other zoning districts. Do you, are, are you comfortable with an approach that says, let's align those two, those two uses? So where the cannabis licenses are retail, we will generally allow them in retail districts, and where there are manufacturing, industrial, and processing facilities, those will generally be allowed in the industrial land uses, just from a overarching zoning perspective. I think then we can, once we answer those two questions, then we can get further in the details about performance standards,
Okay.
odor mitigation, setbacks from residential, and then the buffer requirements as we get into it, but we just wanna confirm that this is a, that approach would be the broadest approach of allowing them across any zoning district where similar uses are allowed today. We just wanna confirm with the council from an outcome perspective that that's the policy direction.
Did that school go into I three?
No, it, it's.
What zoning was that? Was that I three?
Mayor and council, yeah, the recent ordinance change was to the I three zoning district.
Jeff, to answer your question, yes.
The manufacturing isn't all I, I zoning, so are you okay with that? Yeah, Vince?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, okay, and then we'll get down to standards.
Now, yeah, mayor, now, and maybe we can get into maybe the more specific nuances about, you know, performance standards in industrial areas where there may be concerns about potential nuisance conditions of odor, and then we can get into the further discussions about the retail location specifically. Do you want us to consider buffers from different types of sensitive uses that are allowed in the, in the state statute?
Okay. Mike?
No, perfect, thank you, Jeff, that was another good conversation. It's worth noting too, for currently for cultivation, it's a conditional use permit in the city, so I would imagine, we, when we move forward this, we would have the same requirements. As we, as Jeff said perfectly, as we take these and put the pieces together, they would match. So if it's an existing conditional use permit required for manufacturing, cannabis would have a conditional use permit as well. So we're not gonna be changing things in that sense, so the third question is, due to potential nuisance concerns with odor, should there be setback standards for cultivating, manufacturing, or processing facilities from residentially zoned districts?
Well, that would be hard, we're already established with our industrial districts and our housing. And the wind blows, how do you buffer that? There's no way to buffer that, because we've already had experiences with businesses that emit odor. And they may smell good, you know, for a while, but then it gets, yeah.
How, how well do the scrubbers work with this manufacturing?
In my experience, mayor and council, in my experience, you have to replace the charcoal filters in them, the charcoal, and to keep them up, as long as the applicant or owner does that, they work pretty well, in my experience.
Probably wouldn't be a nuisance unless there's charcoal needs to be replaced.
And so, there's other mechanisms out there as well to, you know, reduce the odor. Similar to the mayor's story about Liang Chin, my, my past municipalities, we had Liang Chin, had the same concern, so.
Yeah, for me, it's, it's about those standards, I don't know what the setback would be, because when odor is in the air, how are you going to buffer odor in the air? Except the standards are making sure that there are scrubbers.
Mayor and council, that's why I think we can actually take three and four here and tie them together, cause the next one is, should there be performance standards for cannabis uses such as odor mitigation? So there is some word that the state's gonna do this as part of the licensing process, that they're gonna be requiring odor mitigation as part of the license. However, some cities are putting this performance standards in their codes, just in case they don't. Other cities I've seen recently put in there like performance standards, saying they have to have security cameras, security systems on site for these uses, and signage, that's the three that I've kind of seen lately on the performance standard realm. But the overall question is, for council is, would you like to see performance standards on cannabis?
Would you like to see performance standards on cannabis?
Within reason.
Wouldn't we be doing that with the buffers or the scrubbers anyways?
Well, they'll bring it back because they have a lot of information, this is just an overview, I would like to see some performance standards.
Yeah, I think as long as we're in step with the state, cause I think the state has some pretty rigorous performance standards, that we're not doing anything more egregious than what they're gonna do.
No, I understand, I'm, me too, I just wanna make sure that we're
Yes.
Not going to be putting ourselves in, but performance standards, it's good, you all are the experts, you're doing the research, bring back the information and we can take a look at it, what do you think? Yeah?
Yes, performance standards.
Okay, all right, next one.
All right. Talked about a little bit. Last but not least, so state statute does allow for us to put, separate cannabis retail, cannabis retail only, it's only retail, can't do anything other, other uses, only retail, can have specific buffers from certain sensitive uses, such as schools, daycare, residential treatment facilities, and parks with minors present or minor activities, is the way the state statute's written. So for schools, you can go up to a thousand feet, you cannot go more than a thousand feet, we can reduce these standards too, to see fit. So what I did is I created a couple maps, and so the first one here shows, it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but the first one's school buffers. So this one here shows a buffer of a thousand feet and five hundred feet. Also, at the same time, I went and kind of mapped out our existing registered hemp businesses, this is an idea of where they're kind of located throughout the community. We have forty-one of them currently, they're registered to state. Now, those forty-one hemp businesses will be able to continue, because they're not impacted by the buffers, it's only cannabis. So the image on the screen is for, showing the maximum buffers around schools, so the properties here are the schools within the community. As council member Workman said, there is a couple of schools within industrial areas. Burnsville High School is adjacent to an industrial area, however, the more intense cultivating and other manufacturing uses that we're looking at are located to the west of there, in the more intense industrial areas, the I three, I two areas, not, or I one and I two, excuse me, not the less intense
Yeah, that's the large area.
Industrial uses. So that's the school buffers, and we'll go to the next one, this is daycare buffers. Now, daycares are hard to map, because county records currently are a few years old, they're not up to date, so the data on the screen is from twenty twenty. So these are registered daycare centers with Dakota County and the community with a five hundred foot buffer around them. So the hard part is, these are the ones that are registered, there's obviously maybe some home ones are not registered out there. So daycare ones are a little trickier to manage if they're not like a commercial or big, well-known daycare facility, you know. The in-home ones are hard to track, as you can see, there is some areas where the community, where there is daycares in residentially zoned areas currently. And this has a five hundred foot buffer around them. And then parks, so the state statute states that parks with minor activities, that means minors are present. Well, I back up to an open, my house backs up to an open space that has no park amenities there, there's always kids in the park playing in the woods. So I mapped all of them, because if there's a woods there, there's more likely the kids are making forts or doing whatever. And this is a five hundred foot buffer, and then we put them all together, and the map on the here, screen here shows the areas, when you put all the buffers on, it really does limit the areas where these uses can go. However, main, most of the commercial areas, there is impacts in the heart of the city, as the mayor previously mentioned. There is a lot of openings around Burnsville Center, but we do have the ability to reduce the setbacks for this if we desire. Instead of the thousand feet for schools, I've seen a couple of communities that have done five hundred now, I've seen some that have done three fifty, and I've seen some that have done none. So it's all on preference and how we want to implement and.
Yeah, and Mike, if, correct me if I'm wrong, and it's, you don't have, if, if the council wants to, us to consider buffers as we move forward, you don't have to have buffers from all of those types of uses, you can do it from the selected ones that you would want us to explore. For example, if it's only around schools, we could certainly consider buffers just around schools and not from daycares, parks, and, as, as just an example, so.
For example, to add on to that, thank you, Jeff, Lakeville only did schools, that's just for an example, they did a, I think it's five hundred or three hundred and fifty feet around schools or five hundred.
Okay, that, that sort of makes sense to me, you know, daycare, and, yeah, treatment facilities. What do you guys think, schools?
Yeah, I mean, as far as buffers go, I'd be more concerned about the manufacturing than the actual retail side of it, because retail is just gonna be a store.
Yeah, but, yeah, because the manufacturing, he was talking about the high school is right adjacent to a manufacturing.
Right, but I think we're only able to regulate buffers on retail, is that what you said, Mike?
Yeah, but also.
I'm not, my concern is more of elementary schools sitting in a cloud of weed smoke than next to a store that's selling it, unless they're like doing samples or something inside, but. I, I, I mean, I don't have as much of a concern on the retail side as I do on the manufacturing side for buffers.
So if we're saying a buffer around the industrial zone districts?
You can't, you can't do that for manufacturing.
Yeah, because the industrial is where the manufacturing, we said yes to manufacturing, and you said that Lakeville has reduced the buffer zone to three fifty?
I think, I believe it was three fifty, I'll verify that.
Instead of five hundred?
Lakeville also banned the use of it in their public spaces.
They what?
They banned it.
The use of it in their public spaces.
Oh, yeah.
So they're a little bit more aggressive on this than.
Yeah, but this is about manufacturing.
This is about retail.
Yeah, yeah, but it's around manufacturing this and retail, and we already said that retail.
I, I, I don't know that we need a buffer, looking at that map.
For retail?
Yeah, for retail.
No, but for manufacturing?
Manufacturing, we already got it in zones, we're talking about retail right now.
Yeah, but as I was, Mike, you said five hundred, right, feet?
No, mayor and council, you only can put buffers around retail establishments only. That's why as part of the zoning code, we'll look at cannabis cultivating and other uses and make sure they're zoned appropriately away from more intense uses, we can't put buffers around them, but we can put buffers around.
So we are only doing retail?
Correct, that's the state only allows us to do it to retail.
Okay, we already just said schools. Okay, schools?
I think there should be buffers around schools.
Yeah.
But
You said five hundred or three fifty?
Within that, they're grandfathered in, because we, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote to put a zone in with this that's going to preclude an existing one that might be within that buffer zone, if they're already existing, then
Yeah.
They stay.
Where do we have schools around retail? Where do we have schools around retail?
No.
Mike? Question, can you go to this, can you go to the school map, the school buffer map?
Now, it's, mayor and council, it's worth noting that some of the ones that are existing are only hemp, they're not guaranteed to get a license for cannabis.
Correct.
So that's one thing that'll get the way in here, and I'll see the attorney has anything to add to that comment.
Yeah, and they get their license from, from the state, yeah, they don't, we don't, we don't produce the license, okay.
When you're talking about schools, are you talking about daycares as well?
No, no.
As well, or just schools?
Just schools, just schools.
Private, public, doesn't matter.
Schools.
If it's a school.
Schools is schools. Okay.
Is that the district office right in the middle there, centered by the green buttons?
Yeah.
That's correct.
I suppose they have early childhood education. I don't, speaking just for myself, I don't see the need, I don't care about buffers for retail, so I'll let you guys hash that out, but I don't think we need them for retail.
I don't either.
Split vote.
You don't need
I don't see, I don't think.
For schools?
I'm looking, looking at, looking at what these schools are at.
Cause what is it, what do we, what's the goal of putting a buffer by schools?
Accessibility, I think.
Easy accessibility, just, I think it's common sense.
Accessibility, that's what it is.
So five hundred and one feet versus five hundred.
That's for cannabis.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. It's just cannabis, because right now they're purchasing hemp, and they're already purchasing hemp, this is just cannabis.
Which, as I understand it, again, this thing still can, so like the head shops that are selling it now, are gonna have to go in and get a separate license to do this, correct? So like a tobacco shop that's already selling stuff, can't just go stock up and start selling when this goes in.
Yeah, they get their license from the state, the cannabis license comes from the state.
Right.
Correct.
It's a lottery, and you, there's a lot of work they have to do on their space to even be able to do it.
So then the assumption is that anything that's coming in for this is likely going to be a new business, unless an existing, you said there's a lottery system?
They're capping it per year, mayor and council, they're capping it per year, right, how many licenses they'll do per year too, cause they don't know how many they're gonna get. And I believe it's like for retail, they're capping it like a hundred and something.
Across the state?
Yeah.
So really, the odds of one even coming aren't even that great, right?
Yeah, general licensing a hundred and fifty. That might change as time goes on, mayor and council, but right now, that's what the OMC is stating, they're gonna cap it, they're gonna do pre-approved thirty-eight and general licensing a hundred and fifty.
Madam mayor?
Yeah.
In consultation with our, a little sidebar conversation, just bringing up certain points, we don't have, currently have setbacks for liquor stores from schools. So I don't, it doesn't make sense to have setbacks for cannabis.
So no, no buffers?
No, I, I don't think it, it doesn't make sense, it'd be inconsistent with what we're doing with alcohol.
Yeah.
And you can just do the same thing, no buffer over there.
Don't know buffers?
And are these conditional use permits?
Huh?
No, these are all administrative, but for something.
Mayor and, and mayor and council, if you could quickly go back to the summary targets, I don't misspeak.
The zoning.
The zoning summary, your, mayor and council member Workman, are you asking about the retail locations?
Well, I was just trying to, yeah, and then I was thinking if
It would.
There's an opportunity that planning or us would. there's an opportunity that planning or us would see it before it went in, but it looks like it would all probably happen administratively, right?
Correct, for the retail locations, correct.
Okay, so what, you guys are saying no buffers?
If we're not doing it for liquor stores, I mean.
No buffers?
And based on the fact that there's not going to be probably a lot of these in Burnsville anyways.
Yeah, no buffers.
Okay, mayor and council, so I think if we could, what I heard is, is to summarize on the five questions. One and two were clearly answered, I think you said, yep, we should, as we review the ordinance amendments to the zoning code for this, allow the retail cannabis businesses to be in retail districts and the manufacturing, the, the sort of those to be in industrial districts.
And then we'll look at the standards.
And then the fourth question, you asked us to consider performance standards, particularly around odor mitigation for the, the processing or manufacturing components. And the fifth question, you answered to say, no, we don't want us to consider buffers moving forward. We just go quickly back to question three, which was around, I think a topic, we talked about buffers, and that was setback, I'll call it locational standards in proximity to residentially zoned districts for the industrial side of this. I understand odor travels, but there, there still could be, we do have industrial properties that directly abut single-family homes or abut residential properties.
We have a lot.
So there's two approaches, one, allow it in all, again, just the manufacturing and processing components of it that are allowed in industrial, to allow those in any industrial district or in any, in any industrial property. Or do you want us to consider any sort of separation requirement from those types of industrial uses in our residential districts?
What do you think? Because our, we, and this is the reason why we have zoning, and I, I like it, but so I'm thinking of Lark. It's only to the east, because Lark is close to you on the north side. And then it also is residential to the east and southeast, when you go to Itoka and, yeah.
Well, there's apartments and townhomes.
Townhomes and apartments around Lark.
If we can mitigate the odors, what would be the issue then?
Well, that, that's, I mean, if we, that's the standard, if we have the standards, yeah.
They're doing, growing or building, you know, widgets.
And that's the reason why I say if we have the standards and if it's right now.
If our standards are strong enough, then it wouldn't be an issue.
Yep.
From proximity standpoint.
Yeah.
But are, are the, I mean, we don't know how effect, I'm going to open up a rabbit hole if I go down that one. Do we know that the technology to mitigate smell is effective enough that it wouldn't, that it would, people wouldn't notice it?
Well, it seems like quality ingredients and Lea and Chin's found the right scrubbers because we don't, I, I, at least, we don't get any more complaints.
When I was, uh, in high school, we had to do two-a-days in 100-degree heat and smell Lea and Chin all morning. So you put, put those two things together.
You're super hungry by lunch.
Rough experience.
Well, some people in that neighborhood talked about that, they gave them a headache because they're smelling.
Smelling orange chicken while you're running laps.
Well, I think.
Mayor, I think then on that, the final question, the third one that I, I heard, no, we should, as long as we consider the odor mitigation performance standards, don't consider any sort of separate separation or distance requirement from an industrial to a residential property. With that, I think, I have the, I think we have the policy direction, again, this is not the final decision. We need to go back then based on the, the policy outcome that you've given us and draft the ordinance amendments and then we will bring that back to the planning commission for their review and ultimately back to the council for your review and adoption.
Just want to throw this into the universe, obviously, if we get a couple of years down the line and a problem bubbles to the surface, like, obviously willing to come back and look at these if something's not working. You know, that, we're not setting these in stone indefinitely, but we do that with everything.
Yeah, we make the law, we can amend the law.
Yeah, if a neighborhood's having an issue, we can come back and look at this again.
Yep, we can always amend, but right now going forward, okay? All right, so everything's good? Okay, members of the council and staff, do you want to take a break now before we do Jared? Or do we want to go on with Jared before we go to the, take a break and then go to the budget work session? What do you want? Because I see people going and, and, and getting snacks, so people might be hungry, I don't know.
Could we finish the last portion of the meeting? I think there was some dates that might have been.
Yeah, the last.
Oh, there, you, maybe Jeff wanted to announce or.
No, yeah, these are when they're coming back to, going to the planning commission and then for us. This is just the when they, when it's going to come back.
I wasn't, wasn't sure he was finished, but.
No, I was just going to, mayor and council, yeah, I was going to say the next steps for us, obviously, we work closely with the city attorney on drafting this to making sure that we meet the state statutes and are legal. So anticipating planning commission is October 14th. We will probably have a workshop with the planning commission prior to that to make sure we provide them with the guidance that we discussed tonight. And then we will move forward with city council around November 4th. And then we'll come back through at Title III in January of '25. Yeah, and it's just worth noting too, we did take an analysis of, did review the adjacent communities. I don't know what happened to that slide, but most of the adjacent communities are in the same spot we are. They're all drafting ordinances currently. It's very interesting to see that, like, Councilor said, Egan's not doing buffers, Wilmington has minor buffers. So everyone's kind of doing something a little different. So we'll provide some additional details, they move forward through the process as well as part of the council updates.
Madam mayor.
Yep.
Question first, uh, just for the benefit of the audience who may or may not have followed the cannabis legislation because it, it happened a while back and that they've been working on it for a while. What are the significant dates that are coming up related to statewide statutes coming into play?
Um, mayor and council, it's my understanding that the OMC will continue rulemaking through the end of '24. And with the expectation of licenses, first licenses being issued first quarter of '25. So there could be additional rule changes coming, or I think at this point they're mainly working on the administrative part. There are some fees that we don't quite know like what they're going to be yet, so that's why we're also waiting to implement those. But the major dates are for cities, really want to get their ordinances, specifically zoning, updated by the end of the year. So when these uses and licenses do get issued, we can just direct them to certain locations and make sure we're compliant.
Follow-up.
Yeah.
Does the law take effect January 1st of 2025?
Mayor and council, I believe the law is ready in place, it's just the OMC's are starting issuing licenses in that first quarter. So the law's been in place, it's took a long time for the state to get the Office of Cannabis up and running. And now that it is, they're doing the rulemaking, getting all the information out to cities so we can start implementing then '25.
So it's likely that we would, as a community, possibly see our first licensed cannabis business open up sometime in the first quarter, maybe even the second quarter, if they're going to take the first quarter to issue the license. There's a lot of infrastructure for that store owner to put into place, compliance, et cetera. It may be second quarter before the first door actually opens.
Yep.
Worth noting, thank you.
Okay. Jeff and Mike, you got everything?
I do.
Okay, very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the legal and regulatory compliance review. And our deputy city manager and chief financial officer, Jenny Rhodey, and Jared Shepherd, our city attorney, are presenting this item. And city manager Lindberg, did you want to have any remarks before they make their presentation?
No, mayor, I'll turn it over to Jenny.
Okay, very good, Jenny?
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'll just give a short introduction and then I will, I'll turn it over to Jared. But as you, you probably know, over the last year, we've been working on a corrective action plan. In the summer of 2023, we, some concerns over purchasing and authority were discovered. And at that time, we immediately implemented a corrective action plan. The executive team and the city manager engaged our independent auditors for a agreed upon procedures audit and the city attorney's office for a legal and compliance review. The auditors presented their report in April of 2016 and tonight, our city attorney will present the results of his review. While, I'll just say this, while no fraud has been uncovered or discovered as part of these reviews, staff definitely takes these very seriously. We've implemented a corrective action plan and while the reviews have been ongoing, we've implemented process improvements, policy enhancements, mandatory trainings and other training resources. So we definitely take these seriously and will complete the corrective action plan over the next several months. And with that, I will turn it over to the city attorney.
Okay, Jared, floor is yours.
All right, mayor, members of the council, thank you. As Jenny mentioned, you know, my review, the legal compliance review follows the independent auditor's review and some of the, the underlying findings you'll find dovetail are, are based out of, of what the auditors will have done. In front of the council tonight, in the agenda pack, I'll give a memo from my office. This presentation tonight will kind of track that memo at a high level and hit some of the highlights and, and points. They're both about one, I think, members of the public who are following this issue. So we want to start out with, with the statutory authority for contracting and, and purchasing, that's kind of our baseline. We are a statutory city, we're a Plan B statutory city. And, and we'll, we'll find that makes some difference in how we, we run things here. So, so as you know, the council has full authority over the financial affairs of the city and provides for their collection of revenues and auditing and settlement of accounts. The council may delegate the authority to administrative officials to pay claims and disperse funds. Kind of a baseline principle at the top of this slide, deriving out of all of this from statute is that any city expenditure must have a public purpose, must be rooted in specific or implied authority in state law and follow the appropriate approval procedures. For a statutory Plan B city, like, as, as we are, two things. One, the council generally has the power to make contracts as needed, necessary or desirable. But in the council manager form of government, there's a little bit of gloss that's put on that. The city manager is the head of the administrative branch of the government, executing and operationalizing the policy of the city council and controlling the proper administration of affairs. And part of that, from Minnesota statute 412, 691, is the delegation of purchasing authority. So within that statute, the city manager is allowed to make purchases and contracts for financial consideration $20,000 and below. So if there's a purchase, $20,000 and below, the city manager can make that purchase, let that contract, sign that contract without council approval. Above $20,000, in excess of $20,000, that contract needs to come in front of the council. In addition, all other contracts, instruments, bonds, where the city is a party, need to come in front of the council for approval. When, when a contract comes in, in front of the council for approval, one of the things that happened, happens is that is, is executed by the city manager and the mayor. That execution of that contract indicates the approval of the council, okay? So that's a little bit of the baseline of the, the policies that underline the purchasing and contracting that a city like Burnsville has to follow. We've historically operationalized and explained internally, both at a council level and at a staff level, how the mechanics of that through city council policies. These include the procedure for paying city claims, policy 1.220, signing documents on the behalf of the city, 1061, approval of grants and submittal of contracts, and then processing construction work orders and supplemental agreements, that's policy number 5075. So those are kind of the four main ones, but there are other policies that circle this area of contracting and purchasing. I want to get into how some of the kind of mistakes we've made in implementing those policies and implementing state law, but I do want to echo what Jenny said, that the important finding here is that there's no evidence of fraud or illegal activity by city staff. What we are talking about are, I would say, unmethodical, haphazard implementation and compliance on some of these rules and requirements. And as, as we've already discussed, city staff has, over the last year to nine months, made a lot of strides and changes in terms of tightening it up, things up and making sure that we are complying with these rules that we're going to talk about tonight. But there is more work to be done and we will also end this presentation with some of my recommendations for the future. Generally, we have about five buckets of implementation problems that we found. These will be nothing new to the council, having seen the auditor's presentation, but maybe putting them a little bit more clearly than, than, than the auditor's report. And, and some of these kind of dovetail with each other, they're sort of, sometimes can happen at the same time. So we have favored to properly contract. That is situations where maybe the, the underlying issue involved a small purchase, but that, that expenditure of funds, maybe it's 2,500, 5K. So it's within the city manager's authority, the authority of the city manager to delegate to employees, but the actual act that we're purchasing has some, some real implications for liability and risk. And so those are things where we need a contract for, even if the underlying purchase isn't very significant. Also, the second area is contracts, just not in front of city council. So contracts that were over the 20K threshold, that should have come in front of council for approval, but might have been approved by a department director or signed by a department director. Improper signatures, again, this kind of dovetails with contracts not being in front of council. They would certainly have an improper signature if it should have been in front of council. There has also been scenarios that we found where a contract was in front of council, approved by council, but signed, signed by a department head instead of the mayor and the city manager. Again, that primary indication that it has been approved by city council in the first place.
Okay.
Favor to follow the purchasing matrix, and this kind of goes back to that baseline idea that we talked about at the beginning, the, the 20,000 threshold. Through council policies, the city manager has delegated some of that authority historically down the line. So zero to the 4,999 was to authorize purchasers. Above that, to that, at 19,099 threshold was to department directors. Within that, there was a favor to, to follow the appropriate designees, okay? And then finally, change orders. So as you know, many projects that come before the council will be estimated to cost a certain amount of money, but things change, especially in the public works side of things. Conditions change and sometimes there has to be the change orders. What we have found, the change orders for significant amounts of money, $60,000, $100,000, may not have come back in front of the council for approval. We had a policy in place, 5075, that does provide some deference and authority for those kind of things to happen at a staff level. But it lacks a lot of clarity with respect to whether it is a work scope change or a change order itself. And so one of the recommendations will be to really tighten that up. So it's very clear to council and to staff what scenario applies. So generally speaking, on, on the slide in front of you, here, we have several recommendations. And I, I want to talk about a few, I'm going to save policy amendments even though it's at the top to the end. So one of the things that Jenny touched on it is training. So, one of the things that Jenny touched on it is training.
Can you clarify, because I know that operational policy, to go back to your original statement, that we gave the city manager authority in operations. So, on these policies, they're operational policies?
So, Mayor, the way we have historically done our policies, we've sort of co-mingled operational policies and city council policies. If you go on our website, we have everything, city council policies and administrative operational policies together.
I just want our residents to understand the difference, because there are some policies that are operational policies, and there are policies that are in the domain of the legislative body.
That's correct.
The city council.
So, an example of that would be a policy that came before the council recently for a change was a special events policy. That's clearly legislative in nature. It came before the council, the council made changes and approved that. I think, you know, one of the issues has been, when you look back at the policies that we have, there are some that have been, that are council legislative policies that look like they have been changed at an administrative level. So, in order to make sure that everyone knows what the playbook is in the future, one of the things we're asking for, actually, direction for tonight from the council, is to continue revisions and look at wholesale all of our council policies, and then come back and kind of determine which ones are really council policies and which ones are administrative in nature.
What you're trying to do is to make sure that we have a good definition between administrative slash operation and legislative.
That's correct, Mayor. So, we would want direction on that this evening. But before I ask for that, you know, if I could just go back through the other recommendations, so, training.
Well, that's administrative.
Yes, we're just explaining what staff is doing. So, we have training that's happening at the staff level. It's mandatory for purchasing and contracting across the organization at this point, whereas before, it was sometimes bifurcated between different departments that were really heavily involved in purchasing, but we realized we need more mandatory training, and Jenny can speak to that as well. Another recommendation and something we've already implemented as part of the corrective action plan is contract templates. Historically, again, we've used those in certain departments, but not across the organization. My office has worked with various departments to create templates that will ease the creation of contracts, so that we can make sure that all of the scenarios where we would need a contract to protect the city from liability and make sure that we have the appropriate insurance, those can be easily done, and that's not a roadblock to getting things done, or getting things in front of the council, or not, as it may be, depending on the type of contract and the purchase. Record keeping. We've also found through this process, through the auditor and through my review, that we haven't always done the best as a city in terms of keeping track of our records and contracts, and so, we will be, over the next several months, working on that and trying to have a more systematic process for record keeping. And finally, you know, going back to policy amendments, at the September 3 meeting, we will have some recommendations for you for policy amendments, going back to those policies that are listed here. And there are about six to seven other policies, again, that kind of swirled in the purchasing and contracting realm, that are council policies that will need to come back in front of us.
Can you go back to your recommendations, please? So, I think this is confusing, okay? Here's why. Because training, templates, record keeping is within the city manager's domain. We're saying that we already know there were some, and then there were some corrective actions, and that's within the city manager's domain, correct? You don't need us to say, oh, by the way, city manager, do some training, he's already doing that.
Yes. Mayor, we're not looking for, we're not looking for a direction on whether we're doing training, we're not looking for direction, we're doing on templates, we're trying to explain what some of the things that we've done in response.
Okay. So, you're not recommending that we do have any actions in these?
No, only the issue of policy review.
Yeah, only the policy amendments. That's the only thing that's within the domain that you're asking us to do. The rest of it is within the city manager's domain.
Yes, these are my recommendations to both the council and staff, yes.
Okay. Now, okay, from an attorney's standpoint, this is for...
This is citywide recommendations from my office.
Okay. Does that make sense to you guys? I'm just wanting to make sure that we, because we have a listening audience who's saying, what are they talking about? But it's making sure, okay.
...our background notes, review and discuss the legal compliance memorandum and recommended policy changes. I don't think there was any action by the council requesting.
No, but it's recommendations, and our people are seeing this. So, there's no action from us.
Nope. And again, consistent with the memo, this and the agenda packet.
I just want to make sure, because this and what we have in our background, and the people are listening to this, if they haven't read the background, if they don't have the background, so I just want that to be clear, okay? Members of the council, any questions in terms of the procedures and the matrix and all that they're putting in place to address corrective action? Dan Keely.
Not a question, but a comment. For the general public, this was brought to us some time ago. So, to the general public, this isn't anything new. This is just a continuation of the process of improving the internal processes to ensure that we have a more clean, or more accurate, defensible, et cetera, right, accountable, maybe is the key word, just accountable system. As we heard the previous time this was brought before us in a public forum, there was no fraud, there was nothing lost, there was a, it was a process issue. I think when we hear the word corrective action, it sounds like, well, then something must have went wrong. Well, process-wise, it did go wrong. Financially, it did not. It was just a matter of how it was handled from a procedural standpoint. And I just commend the city manager and staff for going into this deeply. As I mentioned the last time, I'll say it again, the trigger for what caused all this was previous to our current city manager's leadership, and it was he that has brought this forward, has gone into this deep dive, highlighted a very comprehensive investigation with our city attorney, to be able to just fix it once and for all, which is, this is what I want to hear as an elected official, and sure the rest of us, that there was a thorough and comprehensive investigation, we've identified all the weaknesses in the process, we've put the fixes in place, and we can all rest assured that taxpayer money is well managed, that we are guardians of that, our staff executes on it, and we now have a stronger process and more accountable process than even we had before, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, it is. And thank you for going through all of that, because it is our staff who identified it and brought it to our attention with regard to that. And it started in the summer of 2023, and then the action was brought before us, that we're going to hire a consultant to do a deeper dive, to really evaluate all of that. And that happened, and so, they began their work in October of '23, and then the final report was in February of '24, and the review and report to the council and to the citizens was on April 16th. So, all of that is, so, thank you to our staff and for their ethical review of all of this, and being good stewards of the public's trust, because, as you said, there was no fraud, it was process, and so that we can comply with all of that. Are there any other comments or questions to Jared, or Jenny, or Greg?
Just nice job, really.
Yeah, because, again, it's all about transparency, and if they, if everybody has been paying attention to everything that we've been doing in this space, it came to light in '23, we were made aware of it, and we went in, and there was always a report before our residents. So, great. Thank you, Greg, and to the team who worked on this and made some very tough decisions, and Jared, for the work that you've done, and Jenny, for your diligence in making sure everybody look at public purpose and making sure that we comply with the law. Okay, is there anything else?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, one action item that I would request from you tonight is in alignment with the city attorney's presentation and the recommendation on a more comprehensive look at what is currently called our Policies and Procedures Manual. I would like the council's direction to continue that work and come back to you with a recommendation alongside the city attorney of bifurcating the currently co-mingled operational or administrative policies from the city council's legislative policy, that direction reflective of exactly how statutory Plan B cities are defined by state statute in terms of my role and responsibility and your role and responsibility would help me greatly in continuing to ensure that we're not only effectively communicating with you, staff to the city council, the city council to staff, but also that staff is carrying out the outcome-based policy direction of the city council effectively.
Okay. Anybody object to what Greg is asking for? Okay, so, continue with that. Do you need that to be in a report on a consent agenda, or not? Jared?
I don't think so, because we'll come back with a presentation of what is going this way and what's going that way.
My commitment would be that we will come back to you, I would like to assemble a project team on the staff side of things, work alongside the city attorney to start making some of those definitions, and come back to you with a conceptual recommendation, at least of what we're thinking, to get your feedback and direction on in terms of those policies. We have a very robust list of policies right now. I think this also gives us the opportunity to ensure that we're using plain language, that our operational and the council's legislative policies are easy to understand, that they use plain language, frankly, that it follows the same type of process and outcomes that we looked to accomplish, or we sought to accomplish through the code review process. So, I do think that it is complimentary there, and certainly will be helpful as we continue to try to ensure that the right decisions are being made in the right places from a staff perspective.
Agreed, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, very good. Okay. The next item, then, is roundtable. And members of the council, I hope that you will agree, one of the things that I'm asking for your consent on is that I would like our city attorney to come before us and update us on the guidance, because their laws have changed with regard to our roles and responsibilities by statute, but I think it's also very good for our residents to understand what it is our role is and what is the role of the city manager and our staff. And that kind of update, also with a lot of the changes in statute, allows people to understand, this is about transparency, so people understand our role and people understand the role of the city manager and our staff. And I would like your agreement to have the city attorney to come back at a future date to give us that kind of update on all of this. So, if there's any objection, and I hope is that, okay, Dan, I have two agreements over here.
That's fine, it sounds like a good housekeeping thing.
Yeah. I mean, our staff is going through a lot of education on statutes. I think it's upon us to also be educated on the changes in statute, but it's also good for our residents to understand what our role is with regard to our stewardship and responsibilities to them. Okay? So, Greg, and Jared, and everybody, you're going to put something together and come at a future date?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much, council.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, one clarifying question, how frequently would you like that? Adam was framed as a regular city attorney legal update and guidance, how frequently would the council prefer a conversation with the city attorney as requested?
Related to Mayor Council's request?
Yes.
It's noted as quarterly? Is that, that's the way I took it in the background? Is quarterly okay?
Things changing that frequently?
Pardon me?
Are things changing that frequently that would require a quarterly check-in?
Or should it be annually?
I was going to say, legislative stuff happens annually.
Do you want to do annual, or do you want to do six months? I mean, I don't know how often, Jared, things change, but I'm just thinking also about, you know, when we're looking at operations and...
Well, Mayor and council, obviously statutes change annually, but, you know, case law changes all the time.
Oh, that's right.
And case law influences the way statutes are interpreted, influences, you know, operations of the council and staff, you know, open media law cases, those kinds of things, so...
Well, we just read in Council Weekly with the PUS thing. So, quarterly, you guys?
Yes, I would lean back on Jared if he has enough content to fill a quarterly meeting.
I think I probably do, I mean, I think it will vary from time to time, but if we're gonna...
Because there's some PFAS stuff that we haven't been up to date on, with the changing laws that come down from federal government to us, so there's some PFAS, PFAS laws around that.
We're going to bake this into existing meeting structure, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that the request, to put it in like, this, like, added to a quarterly work session agenda as an update, or are we talking inside?
What do you, I mean, what do you think, quarterly or six months, or...
I'm happy to come to a work session on a quarterly basis and...
Okay.
And provide updates on...
Okay.
And if nothing happened in that quarter, you can say, we don't need to meet...
Yeah, so, yeah, so, we'll say quarterly, but if you don't have anything to report, then you can, we can, but the thing is, you will be before us at a work session, so that our residents can also be a part of that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, Greg?
Thank you.
Let's see. Oh, then we'll go to reports. You have anything to report, Ben?
Nothing.
Dan?
Nothing.
Dan Keighley?
I'm not going to say nothing, because I never do, now I do. I'm just going to give a transportation update. Metro Cities, at our Metro Cities Transportation and General Government Committee meeting Monday, yesterday morning, Met Transit had presented a major update on what they are doing, probably what's on anybody's mind who's thinking about transportation and transit and post-COVID transit. It's worth noting that Met Transit had identified several routes that have not recovered post-pandemic, and that they are now going to cut those routes and shift their attention and those resources to more microtransit, which they've been involved in for a year and a half. After that, and Woodbury and Roseville are where they're expanding their microtransit for Met Transit. Southwest Executive Director Eric Hansen spoke after that and presented. And just for a side note, microtransit was innovated in the state of Minnesota with Southwest Transit in 2016. They're planning on doing an autonomous microtransit rollout with May Mobility, who we've, MVTA has had discussions with, that we talked about a rollout this fall. We made a decision to take that money and put it into more, ordering more MVTA connect vehicles now, and layer in that May Mobility autonomous microtransit program on top of our existing... our existing MVTA connect routes in 2025 instead of 2024. And then one point I thought was very interesting, Director Hanson, executive director, he was very articulate in pointing out how we can attract younger riders. Transit is sort of like many parts of government. It moves slow and predictable and steady. That's good in a lot of ways. When technology and innovation is moving at a faster pace, it can leave cities behind or transit agencies, governments, government agencies behind. And he shared with our group, we need to be thinking in transit about like Apple Pay, using your mobile phone when you get on a bus to pay for the, and not have to buy a card, go to a machine, pay cash to the driver, or exact change to the driver, all these sort of old-fashioned methods of payment. And I think he was spot on, like Apple Pay or Venmo, to be able to, you know, touch your phone to the, when you walk on and go. So I agree with him 100%. If transit is going to attract more of the younger riders, who in many cases do want to ride transit, because some of them don't have a car intentionally, they like using public transit. We need to update our, modernize our systems. And then this morning at the Chamber Transportation in the know, MnDOT spoke, MAC, the airport representative spoke, Dakota County Transportation spoke, MVTA presented, and the city of Burnsville, our own Logan. And there is where we noted the fact that I brought out earlier about MVTA being more flexible to customize bus route to help our employers and the school districts, or, sorry, the colleges, to be able to move those folks back and forth, more support there. So National League of Cities, we've been kind of off in the summer, the last couple of months, not a lot going on. Have a meeting Thursday this week, and gearing up for a very big city summit in November in the city of Tampa, and bringing the culmination of a 100-year celebration that the NLC has been conducting this year to a close. I'm sure it's going to be a very good one. I know many of us are going or planning to go. And that's it nationally. Lots of, a lot of grant money out there, but as we're finding, it's competitive money. We don't always win. Thank you.
The only thing that I just want to report is that Metro Cities, I'm on the Metropolitan Council Agency Policy Committee with Metro Cities, and there's not much. One of the things that we continue to work on is to make sure that the Met Council involves cities on all steps. And I think Jeff, I think the Met Council reaches out to you with all of the things that regards planning and all of that. So they're, I don't know anything about, but they are engaging you and your staff on all of those, planning and review and implementation of those regional plans. The other thing is that we're looking at all of the different policies, and then there are some things that, from our committee, we support, and some things that we're amending. But other than that, there is not much that's going on in our committee with regard to that. And I think, Councilmember Gustafson, you're saying the same thing with regard to Metro Cities.
There's not much going on.
Yeah.
Our next meeting will be probably after all of your groups get done doing your thing.
Yeah.
And I'll come to our board for approval.
And Hugo, you haven't seen anything different from all of this, right? Because we're not, there is nothing new that's coming up. We're supporting a lot of the things that they have talked about in the past with regard to all of the different things that have to do with planning.
Madam Mayor, council, that is correct. There's renewed emphasis on keeping things locally and organizing locally to come up with, be it legislative agendas or what have you, but a strong focus on local first.
Yeah. Okay. So that's all I have to report. Greg, is there anything else from staff?
Nothing for me, madam.
Okay. With that, we will adjourn by acclamation and then reconvene, what, in 15 minutes for the special budget work session? Okay. We'll reconvene then, and we're taking a break.